You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that were nice to me. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cakefield. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one hurt around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville. Talking about my hometown Fayetteville.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, August 28th, 2017 regular Fayetteville City Council meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask Pastor Richard Lee from Village Baptist to come up to the podium. Pastor Lee, if you would remain at the podium after our pledge of allegiance, you can tell us something about the mission over Village. If everybody please rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray together. Father, we love you and thank you for the gift of this day. I pray for peace over our city tonight. Pray for peace over Fayetteville. Lord, be with those who are first responders in South Texas tonight. Lord, as we remember, we're thankful for all that, those that are giving and serving. Thank you for this council. I pray that you'd give this council wisdom, discernment, and understanding. God, give them courage in decisions that they'll make even this evening. Lord, I pray that the city would be a testimony for others in our state and in our country. God, continue to bring us together, unite us as one. Pray for unity around our leadership, our new police chief. And God, we give you thanks. We honor you in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America. We see the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Lee?
Yes, sir.
How are you?
I'm doing great, thank you.
Good. You guys run a pretty special service and mission over at Village Baptist. Tell us something about it.
Well, we're about helping people connect people to Christ and His family. And I've just been here since December, learning a whole lot, loving our city. Our church is involved in building a home in Fayetteville that's been rebuilding a home from the hurricane, adopting a mobile home community off Rayford Road and coming alongside those citizens, serving them, helping bring some renovations there, and helping model some things so that test scores go up and that crime rate goes down. And we're delighted to be a part. Just expanded to two services two weeks ago. And so eight-thirty and eleven, run a little bit over a thousand or so. But about, not about building a big church, but mobilizing people to love this city and partner with you guys. And we're grateful for you.
So you guys do some great things over at Village Baptist. And just for folks that may be watching, your predecessor is very well-known. But tell those that may be watching on television where Village Baptist is and...
Yes. So Village Baptist Church, and then we also have Village Christian Academy. And we're on McPherson Church Road. And I'm following a legend of twenty-something years and moved here in December and looking forward to spending the rest of my life here with you.
Oh, a pleasure to see you and a pleasure to have you here. Thank you so much for doing what you do. At this time, are Keep Fear Heroes folks in the house? Come on up. How you doing?
How you doing?
Good.
All right.
Good to see you.
Good to see you also.
So, let me get over here into the microphone. What a great honor. You know, one of the things that makes Fayetteville so great is our professional sports that we have for a city of just a little over 200,000. We've got professional football, we've got professional hockey, and now we've got professional baseball coming. So we couldn't be more excited. But you guys certainly make the quality of life in our city so much better. And we'd like to thank you for doing everything you do. And we had a good season this year, right?
Yes, we did.
All right. Well, tell us something about the season.
Well, my name is Barbara Spigner. I'm the owner of the Cape Fear Heroes. And this season, as we did in other seasons, we've won the championship here for our city.
In a new league.
And we also developed a new league which spearheaded all of this. And everything was very successful. So you all are looking at Fayetteville's Cape Fear Heroes.
Very good. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.[792.82][792.82](Applause)
And congratulations on a successful year.
Thank you.
And don't let us down next year either.
I will go.
I know you do. You do. You do excellent. And Mr. Devier, come on in and...
May I have my coach, Tom?
Sure. Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
This is the one right here.
This is the one. Good evening, everybody. Good evening.
Inspirational moment with the coach.
Absolutely, absolutely. I see all you wonderful faces out there. I expect to see you guys next year in the crowd as we go on another journey. And it's an honor to be honored by the city. We're going to keep doing what we do and hopefully we'll see you guys next year. Absolutely.
I'm sure. I'm sure. That's great. Thank you. So let's take a couple of pictures here. And Councilmember, come on in. You want to get on the other side with the trophy and put that trophy there. So good to see you. I miss seeing you. Coach, thank you. Appreciate you.
You want to play some football?
Say it, Mr. Crisp.
You want to play some football?
We are truly a city that is blessed having so much professional sports and such high-quality professional sports teams. So between the Heroes and the, what's their new name?
Marksman.
Marksman, thank you. All I could think of was Fire Ant. And then with the Astros coming, we're... And the Swamp Dogs. Well, they're college. Yeah. But good sports in Fayetteville. So council, at this time, I will entertain a motion. Oh, sure. Yeah, we are, we're still in the announcements phase. So I'll recognize Councilmember Art.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the pastor for the offer of prayers and thoughts for the folks in Houston. It wasn't, it wasn't even a year ago, we were experiencing a hurricane of our own here. And it was a devastating 500-year flood. And folks, I hate to say it, it almost pales in comparison to what Houston is experiencing. And so please keep them in your thoughts and prayers. But the city and PWC, you know, partnering together, has made an offer through the American Public Power Association. This is very typical during these natural disasters. And that offer's going to go through the APPA to the city of Houston and their public utility providers. And if they request and ask for help, then we will send crews and trucks to Houston, Texas, to help them as quickly as they can get power restored. Very similar to folks that came into Fayetteville in Cumberland County and helped us get our power restored after our catastrophic storm last year. So I want to thank PWC, the commission, and all the folks that were there for being willing to make that offer. And we're going to look at some other things as a city that we can do to help support. They're going to have tremendous needs to raise money. You know, people are displaced, people are homeless, people have lost everything. Very similar to what we experienced here. They're going to have tremendous needs in the coming days and months. And so we're going to look at ways that we can encourage giving through different nonprofits that can immediately impact and touch those people in their lives. So just keep that in mind. You should hear more in the coming days from us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Art. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would like, before I go on with the glow run, I would like to say that if you notice at the end of our diocese, we usually have a place for the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. Today is the first day of school. Got a phone call from Ms. Crystal and said, "Everybody is getting situated in school doing paperwork." And I told her, "By all means, please have them stay at home so they can get ready for their second day at school." With that being said, for those of you that do not know what the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council is, it is the youth council that was given rebirth four years ago for our high school students. We ask, we have four, I'm sorry, ten students from every public school, five students from every private school are welcome to come into the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council where we teach them all about government and about Fayetteville and all the great things that our city and county are doing. With that being said, on September 16th, we have the Glow Fest, which they had their first one two years ago. We skipped last year. So we really need the public support. This is ran by your high school students here in Cumberland County and Fayetteville. They, it is student-led. These children are going out to businesses, asking for sponsorship, asking for runners, asking for volunteers. They are out doing it all themselves. And this weekend, when they had the, Sunday yesterday was Pack Your Bag? Got Your Bag. I'm sorry. On Saturday, our youth council gave their area, their meeting room, and they came together and helped packed all those bags. And they were out there last, yesterday, doing the exact same thing. So please support our youth and come out to the Glow Fest. It is September 16th at Festival Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Council item 5.0 is the approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Art, segmented by Councilmember Wright. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, council, I'll ask for your vote. Madam Clerk, that passes by unanimous vote. Item 6.0 is the consent agenda. Council, I'll go to you for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Moved by Mr. Crisp.
Segue.
Segmented by Mr. McDougal. Any discussion? Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. Earlier today, we sent out an amendment to 6.12. If the motion could reflect those changes that we felt needed to be included in the council's action tonight as part of the consent. Or if you'd like, we can pull it and our chief financial officer's here can explain it in greater detail.
That, I think that's fine. 6.012 is a call for the public hearing for fire station number 12 and the installment financing agreement. This is just to schedule the public hearing. So the details, of course, are online and are public record. But will be discussed also at the public hearing, which is called for on that agenda item. Thank you for the clarification. Seeing no other questions, council, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's also unanimous. Item 7.01 is special use permit to allow transitional housing for domestic violence victims in an SF-10, single-family residential district located at 6018 Blair Moore Street, near the intersection of Blair Moore and Lynn Hurst Roads, being the property of Joanne Bryson Baker.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Mr. Harmon. Thank you.
Being that this is a special use permit application, if we could get all of the speakers to the clerk to be sworn in before I start.
Mayor, we have three speakers for this item. We have Ms. Joanne Baker, Cynthia Arrington, and Mr. Glenn Borg.
If you three would come forward, please, the city clerk will swear you in.
If you would just raise your right hand and pledge your left hand on the Bible. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help your God? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is case P-1711F. It is for the issuing of special use permit for transitional housing for domestic violence victims. As you said a moment ago, it is in an SF-10 district located on Blair Moore Street. To give you an idea of just where Blair Moore Street is, here at the bottom of your map is Cliftdale Road, the old marquee restaurant here in the lower-left, and the lake there on Cliftdale as well. So it kind of gives you a general idea of where we're looking at. And everything, as you can see surrounding this property, is basically SF-10, single-family. And that's what we show here on the next existing conditions map. And our land use plan calls for the same thing. This is a photo of the property as it currently sits. There are, it is, there were some conditions offered by staff and accept, and the zoning commission, and accepted by the owner, that no more than three women and nine children be allowed to stay at any one time and that they maintain the character of the neighborhood. At the zoning commission meeting, there were three speakers, as there are tonight, two in favor, one in opposition. Those in favor spoke to the, their educational backgrounds and the need in the community, while the person in opposition cited his safety concerns for such a shelter. The commission did vote three to two to make, to recommend approval. So staff and zoning commission have recommended approval. And that's based on the facility will have a 24-hour on-call staff, be maintained as a home and not interfere with the character of the neighborhood. Applicant would limit the number of residents to no more than three women, nine children. Land use plan calling for low density and that they can meet their use-specific standards for transitional housing. Any questions of staff before we open your public hearing?
Madam Clerk?
Mayor, our first speaker is Ms. Joanne Baker.
Good evening, Ms. Baker. Good evening.
Go right here.
Well, the home belongs to me, the house, the property belongs to me. And I used it for a rental. And people just don't take care of other people's property. So the last time that I had to refurbish the house, I decided I would do something different with it. And this is what I chose to do. There would be, we have, I had it set up for three families, female, the mothers, and three children, if they're real small, yeah, three children for each room. It's fully furnished. It has plenty of beds, fully, the kitchen is fully equipped, a living room, dining area. It has everything that a person transitioning from a domestic violence situation into their own home. There is no time limit on the, on the stay. So it's, so they can stay there for at least three months. Then they would have to, they would have to actually move because after three months, they should be in a place that they're ready to move into their own place. They will be referred. They will not just be taken from a phone call, but they will be coming through the system, the care center, the Salvation Army, other places such as the, that need, that helps the families transitioning from violence, domestic violence.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Cynthia Arrington.
Hello and welcome. You know, I didn't read the rules earlier, which I normally do at the beginning of all the public hearings and public forums, but we do have three minutes. Is the timer working?
No, sir. It's unlimited because it's special use.
Unlimited. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Well, thank you, sir. But I'll assist Ms. Baker by making it very brief. She answered most of the general questions. I just wanted to add that because of the community need for domestic violence victims and their children who often extend their stays at the other shelters within the city, sometimes they need an extra little push or extra little help, and that's what we were trying to offer. We plan to apply for 501 nonprofit status if this step is approved.
Thank you.
Mayor, our third and final speaker is Mr. Glenn Borg.
Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Glenn Borg, and I've been a resident of that community at 6018 Amstead for, since 1963. The community has always been a single-family residence, and we'd like to keep it that way. Mrs. Baker now lives in Hope Mills, so no longer really has an interest in how the neighborhood is kept. In the area of Pushton, there are a number of families of small children. Some of these children are mentally handicapped, and numerous elderly people. We are concerned about their safety and also the safety of families should the abuser of these women and children come looking for them. We will oversee this house to ensure that it does not happen. Who will be responsible for the residents and their visitors? Is there a safer place for them? If the board approves their request, we ask only one of the families be allowed to reside in the home at any given time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, we have no further speakers.
Okay, council, any questions, or if not, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Arp?
Mr. Mayor, I did, I did have a couple of questions. Mr. Harmon?
Yes, sir.
In comparison of this, of this home to the surrounding neighborhood, the resident and the citizen just stated that all the homes in this neighborhood are single-family. Is that correct?
It is. This is actually one of the few areas of town where they were able to meet their, the half-mile separation from any group home or other transitional.
That's not the question I asked you. I asked you, is this neighborhood predominantly single-family?
Yeah, and that's why I was asking it that way, because it is predominantly single-family. Most even single-family neighborhoods will have one or two homes within them that have something more than just single-family.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
And then, who regulates our group homes?
Those are regulated basically through, you know, if it's just a group home, then it's just through our code enforcement.
So when, when someone comes into one of our neighborhoods and they, they convert an existing single-family dwelling into a group home, there's no oversight, no regulation, no?
There's a little bit if it's a large group home, which is the six or more. If it's five or under, then they don't even have to come before city council, and so they're out there, you know, they're just a small five people that are unrelated, living in the same home together.
Okay, and how many group homes do we have in Fayetteville?
I don't have a complete number right off the top of my head for that. There are quite a few within the city.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, you know, I'm just a business-oriented kind of person, supply and demand, and, you know, are we, are we overrun with demand, or are we overrun with supply? I mean?
Well, you have to remember, this one is a specialized home, whereas other group homes could be anyone, any group of people who are unrelated, living in them. This is, these are coming to these ladies through other means in the community because they are domestic violence victims.
But, so I go back to my, my previous question about regulation. This is, to me, is kind of like a zoning issue. Once you approve the zoning, it's zoned. It can be used, however, within that zoning, and if there's no type of regulatory oversight, once we make this approval for a group home, what are the implications?
Right. If someone in the neighborhood were to start suspecting that instead of domestic violence victims, that they were actually just having a normal group home, that we're letting anyone live there, then they could complain, you know, send in a complaint to the city, and our code enforcement division would go out and investigate, and it would start in that manner.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harmon.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. Mr. Colvin?
Mr. Harmon, hold on one second. So, Mr. Arp kind of touched a little bit of what I wanted to know. Now, a group home is usually something that's for maybe developmental, disabled, or, or some other characteristic. Is this, would this home be required to go through the same licensing process as a group home?
No, and.
With the state?
Group homes aren't necessarily for people that are.
Well, well, I didn't mean that. My, my point was, is that, does this classify as a group home as far as the, the state licensing process is concerned?
I don't believe that it would require, because I think with the, with the state licensing, it gets up to that above five people.
So Ms. Baker, you don't have a, Ms. Baker, can you come forward? So I want to make sure that we're not classifying what you want to do as something different than what it is. Do you have to apply for any kind of state licensing for what you're talking about doing?
Not that I know of.
Okay, thank you. So it's really not a group home, and it's just more of a shelter for domestic violence victims?
It's also been known as like transitional housing.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And, and finally, are you aware of any other homes that are, serve the same need in the, in this community?
No, sir.
Mr. Harmon, are you aware of any special licensing that we've granted homes that are similar to this?
Uh, no, sir.
So, so it would be assumed that there's probably some need for shelter for people that meet this criteria, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wright?
Uh, yes, Mr. Harmon. Given the nature of, of this service in our community, domestic violence is, it's very important that we take care of certain residents in our community, which are those women and children that fall under domestic violence, and it's, it's the percentage of domestic violence on women across this country, those percentages are going up. So these ladies that are starting this domestic violence home, of course, we know that there is a need, and sometimes we overlook those needs based upon the silence. And when you have the perpetrator, those that are committing the violence against these women, my question is, those people do not know where those women are living. So in this case, could it be that, that the husbands or the boyfriend or whatever, how easy would it be for them to find out where they live? Because I know in some domestic violence facilities, they work with the police station and things of that nature. What, what is in place for the safety of the family in a neighborhood like that?
You know, unfortunately, it's my understanding that a lot of times, or most of the time, when kind of the security is breached, when the, the abuser finds out where a home is, it's because he finds out from the person that he, that's living there, that was being abused, either directly through them, through their kids, through some means like that. But yes, they do plan to work with the police as well. You know, that's definitely a necessity for a home like this. But, you know, there's only so much you can do, and you hope that people don't find out where the place is, but there's always that possibility.
So, and this was passed by the board?
The zoning commission did recommend three to two to recommend approval.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Ms. Jensen?
You can stay right there, Ms. Harmon.
I'm getting smarter.
Okay, so my first question is, where did we get the number of three women and nine children? Did, is that because there's three bedrooms, or?
Basically, that was the request of the applicant because of the three bedrooms, and that would be the maximum, you know, that they would.
So each bedroom could have four people in the bedroom?
Correct.
Okay, and how big is this house?
It's about twelve hundred square feet altogether.
Yeah, that was my next question. And how many bathrooms?
I believe it has one.
One bathroom?
There's two.
Is it two full baths? Is it one ba, two full baths, and a kitchen, and?
If you would come to.
Okay, two, two full baths?
Yes, ma'am.
And three bedrooms?
Yes.
A kitchen?
Kitchen, dining area, living room area.
Okay, so it's, and it's twelve hundred square feet?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So that's how we got the number of three women and three kids. So at one point, we could have twelve people in, in the house. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, so then my next question will go back to code enforcement of what Council Member Arp was talking about. So if we, if the neighbors end up in, it's not domestic violence, or there ends up being twenty people there, or sixteen people there, the only thing that the neighborhood can do is to report it to the city for code enforcement?
That would be their first step, and code enforcement would do just like they would with.
As we all kind of know in court, in code enforcement, that could be a, a month-long to six, sixty-day process to even get it started.
It can take a while sometimes, as you're aware.
Okay, okay.
Have to go through all the legal steps.
Yes, because we, code enforcement, by the time we can even, you know, we have to go and notice the people, that this is what's happening, and then come back, and so we're looking anywhere from thirty to ninety days to resolve the problem, if there is a problem.
Probably so.
Okay, and we kind of don't have any real rules, because it would be a special use permit?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Crisp?
Mr. Harmon, how recent was the picture of the home that you showed us?
Uh, it's fairly recent.
Because it looked like Ms. Baker needs some tender loving care. Ms. Baker, please come forward. I hate to have you jumping up and down. You probably need to just kind of stay up here until. I'm the last one?
Yes.
I have you, I think you said that they would be allowed to stay for ninety days?
Yes.
Okay, that brings me to the issue of what will, and, and I heard the other lady say, if it's approved, you intend to apply for a five oh one C status.
Yes.
But what is your plan for assisting these victims of domestic violence in transitioning out? I mean, if they do nothing at the end of ninety days, you gonna put them out, and they have nowhere to go?
No, they're coming from other, other facilities of, that's already got them started, looking for jobs, looking for housing, getting things in place, getting their children in schools, so.
So your facility will simply be providing shelter for them, and not necessarily assisting in transition?
Transitioning them, yes.
But who's going to help them find jobs and placement and, and that? That's my concern. Because if you say they're coming from other shelters, so they come and stay ninety days, and then you kick them out, well, that's not the right term, but you, you say they have to go, and then where do they go? That's my concern. I don't want them going to the street.
No, I wouldn't want that either. But like I said, they're coming from other, other.
Facilities?
Facilities, like the care center. Now, the care center is very, they really show these ladies what they have to do.
Yes, ma'am.
And it goes beyond them being in the shelter. They have, constantly having therapy, group therapies, numerous things for women, if they want to help.
You are, you're confident that there are agencies here in the city that you will tie them into, that will help them look for jobs and assist them in making the transition?
They should already be tied into those facilities. We, we would just make sure that they utilize them to the point.
Who will send them to you?
The care center, the Salvation Army, wherever domestic violence women and children go.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Should I stay?
All right, Mr. Colvin pushed his red light, so.
He hit my question.
Oh, okay, all right, very good. Counsel, I'll go to you for our motion. Seeing no further questions.
Everybody's gonna say?
Madam Attorney?
Mr. Mayor?
Did you close the public hearing?
Oh, thanks, sir.
Public hearing is closed. Here you go. Here.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor and Council, I would move that we disapprove the special use permit to locate a transitional, traditional housing, transitional housing facility in SF-ten district located at sixty eighteen Baltimore, Blair Moore Street, as presented by the staff, and based on the conditions that are listed below of the special use permit, and that being that the special use, as described tonight, is not compatible with the character of surrounding lands regarding service delivery, parking, loading, odors, doors, noise, glare, and vibration, and also that it's not in keeping with the compatibility or the character of the neighborhood.
Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Councilmember Jensen. That's a motion to not approve. Any questions? All right, seeing none, counsel, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that is six to four. Those voting against, councilmembers Wright, Colvin, Hurst, and McDougal. Those in favor of the motion to disapprove are Crisp, Devier, Arp, Robertson, Jensen, and Moan. Seven point zero two is a public hearing for consideration of community development block grant disaster recovery programs. Madam Clerk, how many speakers?
Mayor, we have one speaker for this item.
Okay. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public hearing should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the seven o'clock start of this meeting. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for discussion on the issue. When the city clerk calls your name, I don't think you got to take off fifteen minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and clearly state your name and address for the record, and at that point, you can address the city council. When you see the lights on the podium change from green to yellow, that's an indication that you have thirty seconds left to speak. When you see the light turn red, that means your time has expired, and unfortunately, due to policy restrictions, we cannot extend that time. Mr. Sharp?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The purpose of this item tonight is to, as stated, hold a public hearing. This public hearing is concerning the community development block grant disaster recovery program as a result of Hurricane Matthew. Basically, HUD has adopted the CWBG program and used it to address unmet needs for disaster recovery for low to moderate income individuals. The information that I'm presenting tonight is for a, a grant that this, this county will be receiving. It's a federal grant through HUD, and it's being offered to counties with the highest impact, will receive the greatest percentage of fund, or assistance. The state has developed an action plan, as we typically do with our, as an entitlement, when we receive community development block grant funds, they develop an action plan. They made it available for the public to review for the required period, and based on that action plan, we're now going through the implementation phase whereby they're making funding available to various neighborhoods, or various communities. The basis for addressing the needs, as I mentioned before, the state has developed an action plan to utilize the community development block grant disaster recovery funds, and again, these funds are primarily used for, to assist low to moderate income families, and it's also based on the Cumberland County Resilient Redevelopment Plan that was developed. The funding priorities under this particular program is housing. The state has adopted housing as its number-one priority in carrying out the various recovery activities listed on the screen, or the various programs that they have outlined in the action plan, and we will follow homeowner recovery program, a rental housing recovery program, multifamily new construction, public housing restoration, and supportive housing services. And then under economic recovery, there is a small business recovery program, and under public infrastructure and facilities, there is a community recovery program. And I'll go into more details with these. So how much aid is anticipated for this community? Actually, the state received a hundred and ninety-eight million dollars for this program, and of that amount, the county of Cumberland and Fayetteville included, will receive thirty-four million, seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which is actually twenty-two percent. twenty-two percent of the, the, uh, grant award, um, that was allocated to four counties, being, uh, Cumberland, Edgecombe, Robeson, and Wayne Counties. And so with the, uh, what's shown on the screen, you can see the breakdown of what the various hardest-hit counties, uh, received, um, with this grant. Under, uh, program adminis- administration, I did want to point out that Cumberland County is the, uh, lead recipient, uh, of these funds. Uh, with that, uh, we have worked collaboratively, uh, with the county to, um, decide or recommend different projects, uh, that we are recommending, um, to the, uh, state. Uh, the, uh, state has, um, they've indicated that they would consider, um, both the city and the county being sub recipients in terms of carrying out, uh, the various projects, uh, within its, uh, jurisdiction. We have included in your packet, um, a summary, uh, proposal that we have sent to the state. We discussed that information at your, uh, work session on August, uh, the seventh, and within that proposal, uh, it includes for, uh, the city and the county, uh, programs for, uh, rehabilitation and repair and restru- reconstruction and development, uh, single-family, um, and multi, well, single-family, uh, and multifamily housing, uh, supportive, uh, housing services, small business recovery, which, uh, makes up about five hundred and thirty-five units of housing, uh, that would be repaired or constructed, uh, and a hundred of those will be, uh, for the homeless. Uh, the city, the breakdown of that thirty-four million is where the city will have approximately, uh, twenty-three point three million of those funds for projects, and the county, eleven point four million. Uh, as it turns out, the, uh, as far as damage and where it was located, uh, the majority of the damage, uh, did occur in the jurisdiction of the city of Fayetteville, so it, you know, makes sense that you would have that type of split, uh, for these funds. I do want, this is a very critical, um, uh, piece of information that needs to be understood, just to make sure that, uh, folks out there that may hear about this program are aware of. Uh, just as, just like our, uh, community development block grant program that we offer, um, on a, on annual basis, uh, this community development block grant disaster recovery, it, it is community development block grant, so it has the same national objectives, um, but it adds a component of disaster recovery. And one of the main criteria for participation or eligibility is that the person that it benefits has, have to be, uh, low to moderate income, meeting that criteria. Um, the two other, uh, objectives that have to be met is where it, um, uh, eliminates slum or blight, and then it meets an urgent need. And of course, when we have a disaster such as a hurricane, uh, these funds can be used for that purpose. Uh, the other items are, uh, gets into the details of how we consider, uh, what is low to moderate, uh, income. And the next slide, um, talks about that a little bit, where limited, uh, clientele, uh, it just goes through the definitions of what low to moderate income is. I won't go through that, but I did want to point out that, that is critical, uh, that these funds are to be used for a low to moderate income, uh, person.
Mr. Moan, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Uh, the previous slide, the, I understand those, uh, the low to moderate income thresholds are set by the federal government.
Mm-hmm.
And since this is federal dollars, we have to, um, follow that. What's the possibility of us getting with our, our local, uh, federal delegation to see if some of those income standards could be raised just a little bit? Because remember, the last six, seven months, we talked about gap financing for, people missed it by a hundred bucks, by five hundred bucks of their income. And again, it's a federal standard, but is that something we could get with our federal local delegation to bring that to Congress? I, I, I know it's not gonna help tonight, um, but try to get those income standards raised just a little bit. I mean, people will always be at the cutoff, no matter what we set or what the federal government sets.
They, they would, um, that is a statutory requirement, so it would require, uh, an act of Congress to, uh, make that change. Uh, I think it would be a very difficult process to do that. Uh, one of the things that the state perhaps could have done, uh, when they received, uh, the funds, uh, w- w- could have been where they requested, uh, a special consideration for that. But because that is statutory, that may not have even been under consideration, because when the funding announcement came out, uh, the federal government did give some leeway in terms of, uh, what things could be, um, expedited, such as, uh, the review process or the comment process. And so HUD typically puts out for these types of things, uh, what they would be willing to be flexible on, and you can make a request, um, you know, for that. We certainly could make that ask, uh, but it would be us making the ask to the state and the state making the ask, uh, to the federal government, since these funds are not coming directly, uh, to the city.
Mr. Manager.
Yeah, but I think, um, some of the guidance that we would give, um, would be to, when people see the programs, that we would ask everyone, apply, and then if they're not eligible for this program, there may be additional funding as well. So continue to refer folks to, to Victor, and, um, we have, um, uh, had some success in making sure that people understand the questions that we're asking as it relates to the eligibility, and, um, uh, we can go from there.
Mr. Crisp? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I've got a whole list. Have you got more presentation?
I do, sir. Just a few more slides.
All right.
Uh, the next, uh, series of slides, and I can, if you like, I can go through these fairly quickly, uh, but they detail the, um, uh, the way in which the city and the county, uh, staff are recommending that the funds be proposed, and it also gives us an understanding of the types of programs that will be available. Um, so we, we are recommending, under the homeowner, our recovery program, uh, single-family homeownership rehabilitation. So for folks that are, uh, currently, uh, still have some unmet need and need repairs, they will be able to apply, uh, for, uh, funding or for assistance with that. Then, single-family homeownership reconstruction, where you may have a need to totally rebuild, uh, a, a resident, a residential unit, uh, that funding will be be available for that. Also, um, mobile home repair, uh, housing repair reimbursement, which this is a very good program and opportunity to reimburse our citizens who have come out of pocket, uh, outside of FEMA assistance or, uh, any insurance assistance with the proper, um, uh, information, uh, w- we may be able to reimburse them for out-of-pocket costs that they may have had in repairing their, their homes. Then we also have included, uh, single-family home, homeowner program to continue the work for Oak Ridge Estates. That's at, uh, the Bunts Road Development. Uh, small rental repair program. This is a program where we would be able to assist investor owners. Uh, right now, we have yet to, um, develop the criteria, but we are looking to, uh, recommend that this be a, a matching grant. We realize that, uh, in the previous programs that we have, a lot of the investor owners were not interested in a loan, and the fact that we really need to get the funds out, we think that this, uh, may be attractive to the, uh, investor owners, and the fact that our goal is to, uh, make, uh, those housing units that are no longer online available, uh, to meet the needs of our, uh, low to moderate income, uh, citizens. The next sections, uh, section deals with, uh, developing affordable housing throughout the city and the county. Uh, one of the goals, uh, for this program is not only doing recovery and repair, but also to, uh, increase the amount of affordable housing that we, uh, have in our community. Uh, and then the last section, uh, deals with, um, creating, uh, supportive housing, um, development with the county. Uh, then the city will propose, uh, some type of program that will provide assistance to businesses. And then the final, um, proposal would be for, uh, some type of homeless shelter, um, that will house at least up to a hundred, uh, clients, and then that gives you that total of the thirty-four million, seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh, just to close this out, uh, we have, as I mentioned before, submitted, uh, a proposal to, uh, the state, uh, by the August eleventh deadline. Uh, we have had a, uh, public information meeting. It was very well attended, uh, both city and the county together. Uh, there is an additional meeting that will be held on September the seventh. Uh, tonight, we're hosting, uh, the public hearing. The county will hold, uh, the second public hearing at their meeting on September the fifth at nine o'clock, and then the proposal is due on September the fifteenth, and we're in the process of developing, uh, that application that will go into the state. And so this is the presentation. Uh, before I finish, I did want to, uh, also welcome, uh, Mr. Rick Benton, uh, with the state. He's the liaison with the governor's office, um, for the disaster recovery, uh, program that we're, uh, working on.
And our best friend over the past couple of months.
Absolutely. And, Mr. Mayor, uh, with that, um, that's just another slide. I, I'm open for any questions prior to the public hearing.
We've got quite a few questions. Go to Mr. Crisp next.
Mr. Sharp, on one of your slides, the rental housing recovery program, you've got one, one million fifty thousand for that. Is the eligibility for that for the landlord or for the person renting?
It's for the person renting the tenant. So when I mentioned earlier that it has to benefit low to, the low to moderate income person, they will have to rent it to a person that would meet that criteria.
And so, I'm back to the old question. We have a number of rental properties that were completely destroyed, and, uh, is there any help in here for the landlord of those rent, of those units that wanted to rebuild so they could put people back in them?
And that, that's what this program is for, and, uh, as I mentioned before, uh, to try to get them to participate, we're looking at some type of matching grant, um, whereby, um, it's not a loan, but it's a, it's a matching grant to assist them in trying to repair.
For the landlord.
For the landlord.
Thank you.
And the benefit is to the, the low-income tenants.
Understand.
It'll be a win-win.
Thank you, Mr. Crisp. Mr. Wright?
Y- yes, I, I just have some concerns about what I'm seeing in some of the communities, especially out, out west, in those, those areas that have been hit hard, uh, in my district, and I still have a lot of residents that's struggling, you know, and, of course, they've come to see if they could participate in the, uh, grant programs and, uh, a lot of the programs that we have also with FEMA, but they come back and says they didn't qualify for the grant. Uh, they came short of, um, five hundred dollars over income and things of that nature. We, we even have, and I'm saying this because I was answering a question, uh, after this, uh, homes that were deemed fifty percent, uh, damaged, and those had to be lifted up three feet off the ground. So because of the process, it was extended out, people was displaced in all over the place, and, uh, their, their kids came in. One house was being lifted up, and in the process, they found out that it would be too much money, money, uh, I mean, the price went up to like seventy thousand dollars for them to get their ninety-three-year-old father back into his home, and they just couldn't do it. So at this point, they've put in fifteen thousand dollars out of their pocket to lift the house up. Then they just say, you know, we'll participate in the buyback program. Um, so now, the buyback program is not giving them the monies that the house is worth nor what they have put into the home, and so they kind of had a loss, and this is case after case after case. But I'm hearing you saying that, um, there are reimbursements that can take place with these family homes, um, but what you're saying is not matching, uh, the experience in the neighborhood with these families, and I'm trying to say, I'm trying to find out where is the, where, where is the, the gap here, and, and how can we actually impact them?
And, and I'll be very honest, the, we may not be able to assist everyone. We, there might be a lot of people that we may not be able to assist. That, that is the reason that I made it very clear that this program is only for those that meet the income guidelines of eighty percent or below the median income, which for us, we have a lot of money to expend, and, and we realize that. And I just want to be clear that you are exactly right. There are people that we could not help because we had to stay within that guideline of eighty percent or below, and even these funds fall under the same criteria.
Now, and, and I, I appreciate, um, Mr. Moan's point, because those people that you can't help because they don't fall under the guidelines and the criterias, then you still have excess money in there for people that, um, don't apply, so that money is not being used, so you have money left over to some degree, but because they didn't qualify, they gets nothing.
That's...
Uh, is that true?
That, that is correct.
O- okay, so, that's one, I got a problem with that, and, and that we, that are policymakers from the, from the state level to federal level, all the way down to municipal level, that we have to go back in and say, okay, we've put this program together, but it's not working like we would want. We're not helping as many people as need help. What can we do to go back? And so I think, uh, again, we need to really look at that, uh, at the state level to, like you say, talk to the feds and say, look, on, on the front line, we still have people that are displaced. On the front line, we still have homes that's not repaired. On the front line, people are still suffering, and it's been, you know, almost a year now, and, uh, I think we need to relook that. The other question I have, and I'm, I'm hurrying up, Mr. Mayor, um, the assistance to businesses. I think you had, it was a seven hundred and fifty thousand?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that was for all the businesses in Fayetteville?
That would be eligible, yes, and that's a, that's the estimate.
And, and how much of that have we used for these businesses at this point?
Well, we haven't used any of this. The, the, this is just a, a budget that's proposed to develop these programs, then make it available for eligible businesses that still may have an unmet need.
Okay, so you, when you have the, the business owner, say, you know, I'm talking about specifically those people that got hit real hard down those low areas, apartment owners and things of that nature, how do they qualify, or do they qualify to?
They, if, when we say business, they, if they own a property that they're renting, they wouldn't fall in that category of, uh, the seven hundred and fifty. They would fall in the category that, uh, Mr., um...
Of the million, of the million dollar guy.
Right, that they would be able to apply for funding to repair their homes where they may have had a low to moderate income tenant living in it, or they would have to rent to a low to moderate income tenant.
Okay, well, I'm talking to some under those categories, and they haven't received nothing.
Well, if these funds are not available yet, um, so they, they will be available to them once it's approved.
And tonight's information is just to set the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Devier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I think, uh, the discussion's already been had on the point I was gonna make, but I guess the question I have is twofold. One, because I'm seeing the same thing that Councilmember Wright is in District Two, along Old Wilmington Road, Deep Creek Road, a lot of these houses have qualified for FEMA, or they, or they don't qualify, and so they're in that gap. Some, so a couple of questions that I have is, one, have we been keeping a list of the people that have come into your office to apply so that we can look at a trend on why they're getting denied? So we could say, these are income levels of five hundred dollars over, a thousand dollars over, the incomes that would give us an idea of what that trend is, so if we're talking to our congressional, or we're trying to do here something local, we have an idea of what that level is, at least give us an idea. So that's one question. And then the second question i- is, are there any other funding mechanisms to help us identify this gap? Because that gap is really, you know, these, these household incomes that are fifty to, you know, eighty, ninety thousand, eighty thousand, probably, I'm making a guess, um, based on people I've talked to, that are not able to make the repairs because they don't have the savings capacity or, or lending capacity, uh, to be able to do that. So do we have a mechanism outside of this council directing our manager to go back to the general, or to go back to our fund balance and pull money forward that's unrestricted, which we have that ability to do, if you want to call it a rainy day fund, and that's something I would hope we would look at if there aren't other options. You've got about six point two million dollars that's gonna go to a single family, um, but that's all gonna be in that low to mi- modern income, and it's not gonna reach where a lot of us are seeing the affected need. So, long, long, uh, response for two questions.
Uh, uh, so we, we do have information on those that have not been approved. Uh, we're not keeping up with the ticks of whether it was a thousand over or two thousand, not to that level of detail. Um, and, and again, this funding is just one source of funding that the federal government has made available. So when you look at, uh, from when this storm first hit, you first had FEMA assistance that was made available, that met certain needs, immediate needs and that type of thing. Some of it covered some repairs. Then you also had opportunity for those that qualified, uh, SBA was made available to them, and, um, so the resources that are available at the federal level, then of course you have the CDBG that deals mainly with the, the low. So this is just one pot of money that is being made. Of course, all the other, um, hazard mitigation programs and things you have, so when you add all of that up, it's designed to help the community, but I think... So when you add all of that up, it's designed to help the community. But I think tonight is a, is a big yay in terms of the fact that to meet the needs of affordable, affordable housing and those that are eligible, the fact that there is an opportunity. And there is an opportunity for those investor owners to be able to repair their, their properties. And so it's not going to be able to assist everyone. And then to the point of going into the rainy day fund, it would probably be, there is no ending point if you were to say, you know, what, what category, and we struggled with this early on when we made those additional funds. Where do you, where do you cut off who we're going to assist and who we're not? Because this, when you look at the whole list of, of people of the eight hundred plus houses that were damaged, there just wouldn't be enough for the city to invest in that type of endeavor. Leaning on the SBA, the FEMA, and now this program for.
And I appreciate that. And you've done a great job. I know you've helped me a lot to, to give me a list of all the different programs that are out there to communicate out into my district and to some people that have asked me. I guess what I'm looking for, are there, based on your experience or, or information that's out there, are there other pots of money? And I know we don't need to get into now. I know this is just to move it to a public hearing. But that's going to come up at the public hearing as far as what are we trying to do for this gap? Because it's there and it's not going away.
And this is not it. But there is one organization that is in place in our county. It's called the Cumberland, Cumberland Disaster Recovery Council. And their goal is to work across all lines with all resources in the community to assist. So the person may be able to get assistance through the volunteer groups and other groups that are out there to help meet the gap. And they will be in existence for quite some time. And so we're using that to help find resources for folks that are not falling into the, the categories where we have programs for.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Colvin.
Mr. Sharp, this plan that you have, what, what's the three or four criterias of community development? Name them for me real quick. Your goals, like your program goals? Because you said these align with your overall program goals to do certain things.
Correct. And so one of our goals is to, is for housing, to create affordable housing to benefit low to moderate income. And because we currently administer a CDBG program, this will help us to.
Yeah, just, just give me the, the four of them real quick. So, so create housing for low to moderates and what's the other? I, I didn't try to put you on the spot, but what, here's, here's what my concern is, is kind of piggybacks off of what these guys are saying. If I build or rent property to people of a certain income level, sixty-five percent of this twenty-three million dollars is going to me. Fifteen million dollars, right? So about, so it's really not making it to the heart of the people with the need because you have to own the property but be below poverty level. So that's, that doesn't align. And the way that it is, the only, the biggest beneficiary of the money is if I build multifamily units and then rent them to these subsidized housing programs, right? Then I'm getting fifteen million out of the twenty-three million dollars, right? Am I understanding that correct, based on this chart? Because this is your proposal to the government to say, this is how we want to disperse the money. But if his concern is like my concern, which is like Councilmember Wright's concern, that the money gets to the people who actually need the money, I'm not really interested in furthering the, the bottom line of people that build stuff that rented.
But, but it does. And here's how it does that. So currently in our consolidated plan, there has been identified, both in the city and the county, that there is a gap of affordable housing in our community. We have an opportunity with these funds. That's why I say it's a yay moment. We have, we have opportunity with these funds to close that gap of affordable housing that's needed in our community.
Right. But that's one methodology.
So, so it does get to the people. So when we have people that can't, can't find a place to stay, they're living in substandard conditions, we can put a few hundred additional units within this community that meets that goal. So it's, it's not just the developers making money.
The availability of it, but for the people that are kind of caught in the middle of that, because you already have some programs, this is the same pattern you use for the money that we get already. So you, where you basically got the biggest emphasis on availability of housing for these people, right? Which I, I support that. But my point is, is that the way that this is lined up, like seven hundred and fifty thousand to small businesses, how did you determine that number that only ten businesses needed help?
Well, it's, it's a guesstimate. But it does align with the fact that the state's number one priority is for homeowner recovery. And so, you know, when you look at the way we've aligned this, we're in alignment with.
So was there any other way to get to that need where if I own my home, I make more than the minimum poverty level? So what, what are we doing to encourage homeownership? Are you partnering with any of those folks that encourage homeownership that still may be below that threshold, that had damage?
We are. I mean, it's, it's, if, if you own, we have some in there that assist to build single-family housing. If you own a home, it is available to you for repair of your home. If it needs to be reconstructed, you, we have money available for a person that may need to have their home reconstructed. So it's, it's a variety of opportunities.
So these numbers can be tweaked. So you could put a little more emphasis over here, a little less over there?
Absolutely.
So when does your report due or your proposal due to the?
September fifteenth is when it's due.
Okay. All right. So we're pretty much stuck with what we got, what we have.
Well, we are. We are on a tight schedule and we're working with the county. But what we have proposed is broad enough that it, it can be tweaked.
So you can amend it even after?
We, we would be able to, you know, amend it as, as we need to.
All right. My final question, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Sharp. And final question, is that money that we allocated for those gap situations, the nine hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, two hundred and forty thousand was from the general fund, which you had a little bit more discretion. Has all that money been used?
It's not. We carried that program out from the time it got approved from you all, from council till the end of June. And out of that, we have approved a hundred and eighty-three thousand of that two hundred and forty for assistance. A hundred and fifty-three thousand, and this is approximate, have been expended with another thirty thousand, the ones that were approved at the very end of the year, that needs to be encumbered.
So, so what are we doing to get the other fifty-seven thousand on the street for the people that fall into that category that's been mentioned a couple?
Well, we, we use the income guidelines that we had. We put it out there. We had good participation. Some of the rental owners that own rental property were approved and decided they didn't want a loan because it was a loan to, you know, the investor owners for that particular program. But we advertised, we had good participation and quite a bit of satisfaction for those that could get that gap. But even with those folks, they still may have additional work that's needed that these funds can continue to help them. And we're still advertising the existing programs that, that we have available.
That's still available. Anyone that's watching could apply potentially for that remaining fifty, fifty thousand.
Not for that pot of money because it, it council made it clear that that program would end at the end of the program year. But the other programs that we have available. So in June thirty.
Mr. Sharp?
At June thirty, it was just through June thirty. Yes, sir.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Mr. McDougal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. But most of my concerns have been addressed.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, I see no further questions. I'll go for action.
Open the public hearing?
Oh, it's a public hearing, I'm sorry. I was jumping the gun as well, wasn't I? Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we just have one speaker for this item. It's Joanna Quick. Joanne.
Ms. Joanna Quick. State your name and home address for us.
Good evening. My name is Joanna Quick of Six Forty J Volunteer Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina, two eight three zero one. I'd like to thank the mayor and city council for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am for the approval of the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program, but with modifications. I have worked closely with my mother, who had, who was affected by Hurricane Matthew and is still in the recovery process. The HUD income guidelines has been one of the obstacles for us. The household income falls right above the income guidelines. Therefore, she has been ineligible for previous funding. I am advocating for families who may not meet income qualifications but still have a very real need for assistance. I propose the city council work with county, state, and federal leadership to adjust the guidelines to be more inclusive for families affected by Hurricane Matthew. I am grateful for all the hard work of our local leadership and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quick. Very well stated. Appreciate that. Mr. Colvin?
Yeah, a question from Mr. Sharp. So she's again into that criteria. Mr. Sharp, were there any grants, that matching grants that we could kind of stretch this money even further that it may not be quite as, quite as restrictive as this?
There are not. The, the only other opportunity that we have is the grant that we received from North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. And that is available as well, where a person can go up to a hundred percent of the median income. So there is some room with that particular program.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. We'll close the public hearing. Counsel, I'll go to you for action. Mr. Colvin?
Mr. Mayor, with that, I would move that we approve the proposed funding model as presented by Mr. Sharp to be submitted for the Community Development Block, Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Colvin, and seconded by Councilmember Wright.
Question?
Further discussion? I see a couple of lights. Mr. DeVeere? Go ahead, Mr. Moan.
Mayor Protem, would you be willing to add and to set the public hearing?
Sir?
And to set the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Keep me straight.
Mr. DeVeere?
I was going to add that, but also it's, it also says we could provide additional guidance to the city manager. Would you accept that we provide guidance to the city manager to identify or look for grant opportunities? Or, or look at our fund balance and provide a recommendation back to us, much like we did with the unrestricted two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? That he bring that back to us as an option for us to address this gap? Would you accept that?
Absolutely. In fact, we encourage, what, what are you shaking your head for, Mr. Manager?
I think that one of the things that we have heard from the council, and you've heard from many of the speakers as well, is this process that we had where we had the public meeting the other night for the CDBGDR. It might be time for us, almost one year out, to actually work with the county to see if there's a way in which we could gather and really quantify those unmet needs which are out there. There have been a variety of programs. And my fear is, is that if we go through the exercise of finding money, we may be in the same place where we prioritized nine hundred and seventy-five thousand and that we have set money aside. But it may not be what is needed at the time. So we definitely will look to see if we have monies and have as much money as the council wishes to allocate. But it may also be a good time for us to go back and verify what those unmet needs are. And if those unmet needs are ones in which the city can fill the gap or if there are other agencies which need to be brought to the table. But I, because I do know from even the conversations we had with Mayor Protem, who, and other councilmembers who may have additional property as well, there was funding that was available, but some of it came with strings or came with loans. And that some people were unable to qualify for. So that would be my recommendation is twofold. One, of course, we'll look, but also to see if there's a way in which we could have a community conversation about what those unmet needs are and if the programs that are needed are still available. And the last bit, sir, was this was your public hearing as well.
Okay, thank you. So certainly I accept the friendly amendment. And it sounds like in that roundabout summary of all of that is that the manager's going to look for funds to try to help people like Ms. Quick and others that have fallen in the middle. But, but the motion, accept the amendment, sir.
Yeah, I had a second. Yes, and I'll, I'll accept that. But I had a quick question for the city manager. The list of, of people that fall in the gap, do we have that list? I know that Mr. Sharp says you didn't tweak it down to maybe who fall under five, who fall under a thousand. But is there a list available now that people have applied for these grants and did receive them? Can we put our hand on that list? Or how hard would it be to, to determine?
Well, clearly Victor's office has a list of all the people they've contacted, who have contacted him. And as well as, we definitely have one of the folks who have applied. And so that would be one place to start.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Colvin. Restate the motion. Oh, Mr. McDougal, your light's pressed.
Well, there were a number of people that I surveyed in the audience tonight. I'd like, if possible, for Victor to, and him and Mr. Benton to kind of hang around for a minute, let them at least talk and explore with them and get their name on whatever kind of list. Whether you make yourself available for them, please. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right. Mr. Colvin, restate the motion.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I move that we would give approval to staff to submit the CDBGR application, proposed application as presented by staff tonight with the caveat that the city manager would look and work with community development and other agencies to find a solution to the gap funding issues as we discussed.
Thank you, Mr. Colvin. That was seconded by Mr. Wright. I see no further lights. Counsel, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. And other items of business, eight point zero one's the adoption of Capital Project Ordinance Amendments, two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty-one and two thousand eighteen dash twenty-two for the emergency culvert replacement of Shoreline Drive. Ms. Jensen?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make the motion. I, I recommend that the council approve the adopt Capital Project Ordinance Amendment, wait a minute, yes. Yes, of two thousand eighteen dash, two thousand twenty-one and two thousand eighteen dash twenty-two as presented.
All right. Motion by Ms. Jensen is her second. Seconded by Mr. Arp. Seeing no further discussion, counsel, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Counsel, eight point zero two is a resolution establishing a small business enterprise program. This is one of the biggest things that I believe we've done.
Good evening.
Mr. DeVeere? Excuse me. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion. We go ahead and approve the resolution as presented?
Second.
Mr. DeVeere, seconded by Mr. Crisp. Seeing no further discussion, counsel, I'll ask for your vote. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Eight point zero three, counsel, is the Prince Charles or PCH Holdings Downtown Development Agreement. This is the second amendment. I'll entertain a motion to defer this to the baseball committee.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. DeVeere, seconded by Mr. Arp. Seeing no further questions, counsel, I'll ask for your vote. Yes, sir. All right, that's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Eight point zero four is a consideration of adoption of pre-qualification policy for construction. That was unanimous. Did I not say it or show it? Okay, I'm sorry. That was unanimous.
Thank you, sir. Just wanted to make sure you wanted me up here. Just, we have a pre-qualification process we went through with the airport that was specific to that project. What we've done is we've taken that process, we've simplified it a little bit and made it generic for programs so that when we go out into the marketplace, we can go through a process to make sure that the larger contractors we work for go through a pre-qualification. So I do have Rosalind Anderson, who's here, a project manager from Barton Mallow, who worked with us on putting this together. So if we have any additional questions, of course, Kim Toon, our purchasing manager is here as well. Kimberly, Kimberly Toon.
Thank you, Mr. Bauer. Mr. McDougal?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I move that we adopt the attached pre-qualification policy and to be used for any construction and repair work projects which the city intends to pre-qualify bidders.
Seconded by Councilmember Hirsch. Mr. Wright? Oh, okay. Seeing no further questions, counsel, I'll ask for your vote. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Counsel, item eight point zero five is a joint nine-one-one emergency operations center for intergovernmental agreement with the Cumberland County. And I will entertain a motion to refer this on to September's work session.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We put this on our September fifth work session for further discussion.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Moan, seconded by Mr. McDougal. Seeing no further questions, counsel, I'll ask for your vote. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.